So I don't know this, I don't know everybody around the table whether they just want to induce themselves to you. Obviously, we know you, but yeah, just so anyway, do you want to just leave round?
Yeah.
What do you think, Jeff?
Hi. Town councillor for Iceni Wadsworth, the new area.
Terry Lane, town councillor for Priory, district councillor for Booty.
Big Pigeon's town councillor for Borough.
Amy Blackburn, town and district councillor for Castle Ward.
David, but you know, you're not going to remember all these names. If I remember quickly, I could just scribble them all down, but I will get, I will try and get used to you and know what your interests are. Yeah. We will, as I said, do our best to provide the information you need with the limited information I have.
So Mark's going to support us on the planning applications as we go through. Obviously, refer to Alan as necessary. So we'll start off with seven four one twenty three. Sorry, Vic.
You said Mark, I don't have a clue.
Webster.
Mark Webster.
Webster.
Webster, okay, thank you. I've no background on him at all, I don't know.
Don't worry. Did you want to give a bit of background?
So yes, I did work here for two and a bit years as a countryside officer. Part of my job was to produce the planning applications and information for councillors and do all that side of things. Get things ready. So as I say, I am probably a bit rusty now and B, I won't know what your particular interests are in the way that I perhaps deal with previous personnel. So apologies for that, but I will attempt to hit the ground running then at least sort of sedate you and try and get you up to date with as much information as I can about the application. So I have looked at the ones that we've got today, just to let you know what I'm actually doing if people want to know about me. I've worked for TCV, which is the conservation volunteers, and we have made an arrangement with the town council to borrow me for a while, basically. So I, as I said, my main background is in wildlife and conservation, but I manage just about. I mean, some of the other councillors may tell you differently, but I manage just about, had to cope with the planning. So I did the job while I was here before, so hopefully I'll be able to, as I said, give you the information you need to make decisions for upcoming planning applications for next year.
I'm sorry if you keep over.
No, that's fine. Find out who, I know.
So it's difficult, Vic, because I'm not aware of who knows what, so thanks.
I know nothing.
All right, sorry. Apologies, I will have it corrected.
He's just showing off.
So you can see I can't. Okay, seven four one twenty three, declarations and disclosures for junior interest. Thank you. So seven four two twenty three, apologies for absence, please Karen.
Apologies, I've been received from councillor at Evans, Gibson, Macanbridge and Wood.
Seven four three twenty three, the minutes to confirm minutes, the planning committee held on the thirteenth of February, which were received by four councillors on the twenty seventh of February. I'm happy for those to be signed as true record.
Great, yes.
Seven four, first one being A, and zero 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 six, Bishop's Primary Academy, Canterbury Way, Mark.
Okay, so this application, that's expected to be within permitted development for a school. It's quite an extensive site, there are going to be 478 solar panels on it. The applicants in the application are very keen to stress that the vast majority of those are on flat roofs. So you probably have been over that side, that's quite important, but the only building that is not a flat roof and therefore has a hint of, yeah, thank you. Exactly, I was quite the you, but yeah, so that is the only building that is in any sense got a south facing roof. And as the applicants say, that actually isn't facing any residential buildings either. I mean, would be slightly visible from the road. And if you have a look at on the top of page four, if we can get that, oh, there it is. Yeah, that is, that is the building that's circled there. We'll just go back up to see the actual picture of the building, I think that's the one, yeah, there it was, yeah. So it's obviously a significant amount of solar generation. They are going to be, as I said, the vast majority would be on flat roof or they are going to be coated with natty glare. So it's a standard solar panel that you would see everywhere. And this is from the letter that came in the planning application for solar from schools. They say, since the proposed installation will be positioned south on all some school roofs, chances of neighboring properties seeing being affected by the panels is very unlikely. That is, as I said, their opinion. At this stage, it is, as I say, expected to live in committed development, but there is the nasty on the Brecon Plan website for comments if you should wish to make them.
Happy to support?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, that point to B, then, zero zero four zero, Forest Sports Centre.
So this is, so discharge of conditions for a previous planning application with regards to provision of a noise management plan specifically all weather sports pitch, which is just, it's that one, I assume, isn't it? There we are, yeah, sort of. Yeah, so this is the all-weather sports pitch. So as you can see, it is on the corner of Stamford Road there, so there are a small number of properties that are directly next to it, just above it there, that industrial business unit. So on most sites, it isn't directly affecting residential properties, but there are a small number that are close to it. So therefore, a noise management plan was required for the planning application, and this is, that's the document that is now being submitted. So measures in that policy do include a policy against swearing, so any group that are found to breach that policy can be removed. And it also includes a finish time of 10pm or 6pm on Sunday.
Okay, that's pretty much a note, isn't it? Because the condition has been discharged.
Yeah.
I will just make a glib comment, I'm afraid. We put in there the idea of shifting the pitch by a couple of metres to enable a walkway round. Brecon basically came back to me when I challenged it, saying, oh, there's no money in the budget to do that, you've stuck with the footprint that you've got. So I'm really disappointed in the way that they came along with that.
Do you have answer a comment should you wish to?
Yeah, the noise management plan is a discharge of those conditions. I'm just informing our councillors the feedback that I had from Brecon that they agree to the partnership.
Well, that's a point, man, if they moved it three metres north, it would be less noisy.
If we want to make that comment, are we happy to just leave it as is or do you want to comment, so, Vic?
Either. So, no comment?
I think if we're able to comment, we should reiterate the point that we made previously about noise. I mean, we had, I remember this, well, we had quite a big debate about it for a number of reasons, and noise specifically came up. Is it going to be any more noisy than what's there at the moment? No, because to a large extent, it's a replacement facility, but this was a fresh application. It was an opportunity to address the noise problems. And, you know, I hope we should refer Brecon to the previous comments we made about noise. You know, I'm sure they ignored them the first time, they're ignoring them the second time. But actually, we should make the point that actually facilities like this do have a detrimental impact on residents.
Okay, Mike, you're coming in, mate.
If it was moved two yards or whatever, there would be an option to put in a sound break of trees, a quick break, conifers or whatever. So I think it's a missed opportunity if they, if they continue to turn this idea down. And I think it would please perhaps those residents in those houses to feel that some notice was taken of their situation, as they didn't ask for if it's been put upon them.
Mike, good sir.
I just think that a no swearing policy is utterly unpleasurable and why write it? They must think we're complete idiots.
I think. You know, the noise is the noise because I can hear, in fact, at home, I can hear it from my house and live on Fairfield. So I don't know how you're going to reduce the noise on that pitch, anyway.
Terry then, Chris.
Yeah, again, sort of referring to if they moved it, the potential for light pollution on those houses would be reduced as well, because you'll get quite a bit of light from the whatever floodlights they use. Every which way you look.
According to Brecon, it's going to be much quieter because the sound of hockey balls hitting the wood at the back, you won't hear any more.
Reluctantly, from our point of view.
Which is really crazy, so that is part of the rationale.
So do we want to make a comment for all deaf ears, but?
Yes, please.
Our noise.
Sorry, exactly, do you want to make, just refer to previous?
Great. To C, then, oh one three four, seven colts foot way.
Yeah, this is, I think you've got a picture up just a little bit, yeah, there. So this is a retrospective, so they're already there, and it refers to two wall-mounted air conditioning units which are on the side of the house. And I don't think there's much I can say really, apart from there's the picture of them.
So are they mounted on the floor or are they going to be there in the morning?
It's wall-mounted, but they do seem to me to be sitting on the floor.
Yeah.
Issues recently about a school having those things mounted and there's a lot of noise comes from them. And, you know, talking about noise, and it's not like a fridge humming all night, I wouldn't want to live next door to it.
And it's very close, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Objection or supporter?
I don't like, I think that was essential.
This makes me no household comments from the neighbours that I can see.
I think this is going to be quite a difficult one because all the ground source heat pumps look exactly the same as this, and that is the big push at the moment, isn't it? So, you know, had they been mounting on the side of the wall up high, I think they would have been right to sort of complain about it, but I think this will be quite difficult.
Carla, then, Terry.
I was just going to ask, I didn't specify exactly why they need these specific units or do you know if they look into any other options or?
I think it's to support the internal use of cold air to keep the house cool, that's how do you think, I think we've got there, Mark, isn't it?
I mean, just three months of air conditioning.
Terry, you want to come?
No, I think the point Mark just made about there being no comments from neighbours is quite valid. I had a quick look online, nobody nearby has objected because I was initially concerned about noise. We have had issues in the past, it might be a different spec of unit, but that can sort harm in the background and that can be quite an issue. But if the neighbours aren't overly concerned, then I don't see why we should object.
Happy to support then?
Yeah.
Okay. On to D, then, the maltings in Raymond Street.
Yeah, so this is a. This is one you have previously.
Yeah, it's a change, is it to?
So, yeah, it's an internal change. On the first floor, there is a, now, can you bring up the picture with the red boxes that I've put on? Which is an email, which highlights the exact area of the things, it's quite difficult to spot on the, on the plans that it's given. But it's, it's basically a plasterboard wall that is being ground, a small area of corridor. Yeah, is it possible to zoom in that at all?
Yeah.
Zoom in that a little bit more. If you can just, if you can still see the red boxes, you'll still have a pointing stick, don't you?
Okay.
It's all high-tech now. Yeah, so they've basically just put a little extra corridor round there to enclose this for five safety reasons, basically. Oh, yeah. So you can see that that's moved slightly as well, but this is the main thing about the, they've been asked to, to certainly enclose that corridor on the first floor for five safety reasons. And there are no objections from the historic building consultant, as he has specifically said.
It's an internal study. Happy to support?
Yes.
Right, any, seven four five twenty three, any late planning applications? On to seven four six twenty three, other planning applications to discuss the following. Application that intends to appeal to Secretary of State.
Yes, so, again, this is one that you have previously looked at and you're not being asked to relook at it all again. Basically, you can, the only option you're given at this stage, because it's a householder appeal, is you could withdraw your previous comment if you wish. So your comment at the time was supporter. Brecon, however, then decided that, and this is from their decision, the proposed extensions are not to be sympathetic subordinate in terms of design scale, massing and appearance, which result in a bulky and congress edition, not the matter of the character and appearance of the wider way in the street scene. The householder's appeal refers to various personal circumstances, but wanting the extension gives a reason for appeal that the views of most of the extensions would be thus obscured. Now, I did, you've either got, you can probably either get it on Street View or I did pick out the picture of the housing question.
On the email?
Yeah. So, as I said, you're not actually being asked to redo your comments or anything. As I said, the only option is whether or not, given this appeal is going in, you wish to withdraw your previous comment of support.
Suggest we're happy with our comments and, yeah, let's just keep those as well. Yep. Thank you. Seven four seven twenty three, decisions of variance.
One came in very late today, I just haven't had the chance to look at it, but I'll raise it at the next meeting if there isn't.
Thank you. Seven four eight twenty three, I was referred to the Greater Theft Partnership.
May I depart?
You may.
Too involved with that, if that's all right.
Thank you, Mark. And we'll see you next month.
Well, basically, see you next.
Okay.
That was the one I can't do, but after that, in your new home, I want to repeat your process.
Great, welcome back.
Thanks very much.
Seven four nine twenty three, update on King's Fleet Sustainable Urban Extension, representatives from Pigeon, I think, to Fox Three.
Yes, sustainable urban extension. So I'm looking at the, yeah, no, so. Almost efficient.
Sorry.
Energy works occasionally.
Over to you, gentlemen.
Good evening, and thank you for seeing us this evening. My name is Simon Butler, Pigeon Street Planning Director and the master planner for King's Fleet. Here with my colleague.
Andrew Bingham, I'm the managing the technical side of King's Fleet, so working looking at infrastructure, roads, drainage.
And we've got just a brief few slides, but thought we'd begin with an update.
No, thank you. He knows it all.
I was in the back of the head.
First, first technical pitch, so it doesn't seem to be appearing on your screen, which is odd.
We're consistent.
You can use the arrows on the keyboard to change the page.
I've noticed the, it's an actual curse on the draw.
Oh, I see.
In terms of King's Fleet, then, we. You should probably appreciate of basically understate most of the house building between Norwich Road and the railway line. We have three national house builders in Hopkins Homes, Tilia and Taylor Wimpy. Just as an aside, Hopkins Homes and Tilia are part of the same group now in terms of group mergers and acquisitions. When they started on site, they were considered companies, Tilia was the, for those of you who are familiar with house builders. Between the three of them, they have detailed consent for just under 700 new homes, both private and affordable. And in terms of order of presence on site, Hopkins came first, Tilia followed, and TW are the latest in the group. So you should imagine there are more Hopkins Homes on site, a few of Tilia and a few of TW. As part of, this is all part of the consented phase one. And we had anticipated that we would see, which is the yellow, if you look on your screen, you've got some yellow areas, three yellow areas in total. Those are all primary schools, two aforementioned primary schools. We had envisaged to see the opening of the first primary school by now. But a combination of the county restructuring some of the existing schools within the town and an unexpected drop-off in birth rate has meant that the need for the school has been, has been put backsliding. So our current understanding is that it will be open in September 2026. I do hasten to add that, so current understanding. Also on the screen between Railway Line and Nidro, you can see a red building. And that red building is our, is our hub. And that, for you, for those of you who pass the site, is currently in build. That would give home to a four straight, 5,000 square feet, eight-to-late convenience store and two inline retail users. We are in advanced discussions with a occupier for the main shop. The two inline units, the current thinking is that one of those, we would earmark for a coffee shop, calmly marketing suite for the overall King's Fleet scheme. So currently on site, each of the individual house builders has their own show home, their own staff present. But in terms of the overarching King's Fleet scheme, we are looking for a home and we are thinking about, let's say, using one of the shops when it's finally completed. Currently, it's estimated to be completed about this time next year. We have had a little rain, as you know, and that may have pushed us back a bit in terms of the effort. In terms of overall infrastructure.
Okay, so as you can see, obviously, we've put in the new traffic signal junction, that's been operational for some time, which gives access into the Hopkins site and to Tilia. The road is pushing around now into the Taylor Wimpy side, which is, oh.
Sorry. So that's the junction, yes?
Yep. So this is the road, so I'm doing this a bit. So, yeah, we're coming up here, somebody's got Taylor Wimpy building this base to just north of the school. As we go further on, we'll continue around there, obviously build the junction there, which will give us half of the loop. The other bit, half being obviously down east of Norwich Road. The key bit of infrastructure we've put in at the moment is the Norwich Road, which you'd probably be aware of, we've built a new primary substation in the north there. We've put a cable right through the middle of the town, hopefully not causing you too much disruption. It's from our point of view, it's gone very smoothly. I don't think there's been any major disruption in the traffic and so on. We're expecting that primary substation to go live probably in May this year. And that will then give us power to feed into the next subplaces, so the subplace for northern. And we'll feed down through this piece, later on feeding east. And same time, we'll make provision to connect across the railway, take that power into phase two and phase three. Currently, all the drainage is dealt with kind of locally, so Hopkins have built some basins there, Tilia have built another small one there. The next phase is Taylor Wimpy, putting a pipe across the road here and building a new spire all the way down here and a new basin in this corner. But that will be starting, hopefully by November, the conditions improve, again, probably May-June time, I would envisage. That's the key infrastructure we've got in at this stage.
Take you on to our, then our, our sort of direction of travel. Most of this. Most of this relates to the east of Norwich Road. So in bringing forward the land between Norwich Road and the railway station, we have invested a significant amount on infrastructure. And not only for primary substation, but also in terms of both found and certain sorts of drainage. The way King's Fleet is phased, and if I just skip to this plan, this purple area is phase one. Phase two takes you over to the light blue. Three is the grey, four is the yellow, five is green. Given the amount of structure we've submitted, sorry, we've provided in this area, as you probably appreciate, we've submitted a application to vary the phasing. So that to, to balance provision versus infrastructure, we're looking to expand phase one with commencement reduction in phase four. None of the boundaries changed in terms of land uses. The main differences are that we are focusing, I will call it the community hub into this area, where previously it came slightly further over. We've already talked about the shop coming forward. What's envisaged in this centre are elements such as care home, assisted living, health provision. Now, I hesitate when I say health provision because it's a site for health. In terms of working forward with the NHS and CTG, I'm sure members will appreciate it's quite a challenging environment. But we can make provision for a site, there's also things like a nursery and that sort of general type provision. So the idea is that we create a hub here. So the idea is that we create a hub here. The basin, the infrastructure that Andy's talked about, would also double up as open space. So in that sort of general area, you've got quite a substantial focus for community activity. Should point out that also in terms of coming east, we're looking to bring forward some employment. So apologies for bouncing between slides. As you can see from the current consent, employment is delayed until phase four. In terms of our aspirations, we have experienced quite a lot of demand pressure on bringing jobs forward. So we're looking to deliver that earlier than planned. That's obviously somewhat of a whistle stop tour through something that's nearly reaching its its 10 year anniversary in terms of its consent. But happy, of course, to take any questions.
There might be quite a few. So the school area that's in phase one, it isn't being built now, is that space being kept? Okay, that's another one. And the primary substation, thank you. All the grass areas were seeded.
Were not seeded?
No, unless they were, they haven't taken.
So we'll pull that back.
We couldn't place particular of the earthway?
It may be that it's been through the winter. That it's a bit delayed to the type of the seedings. I will make sure it's done.
Also no attempt to rake it over and remove any of the flints that came out of the land either. So take the point about seeding, but it looked awful along earthway. That was one of my points, sorry, Matt, keeping in that.
Brilliant, thank you.
Another one to you. Great, you see the infrastructure in there, streetlights?
There's streetlights to go in along Victory Way. That's the only, there's no, highways have no requirement to put them kind of deeper into the estate. So yeah, so that blue road will have streetlights in nowhere else. Okay, which is normal nowadays.
Are you sort of having footway lighting and that sort of thing, rather than streetlights as such?
Well, any lighting, because you know, at the moment it's a, well, it's a field. It's very dark on that end of town and resident substation.
Okay. I mean, something we can look at, it's certainly never been requested. I mean, it can either then belong, if it goes in, you'll either end up being owned by yourselves as a town council or by a management company. That's kind of a change from what we've done to date. So we would need to take that away and think about that.
Okay. Point is that we follow Norfolk County Council project, which whilst we might accept has its issues. As Andrew said, it's not a problem now to see sort of the main roads with public lighting, but the subsidiary roads.
City County Council wouldn't pick up any footway lighting. That would be the city town council or management company. There's been no provision made given that.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any town council light in any way in town. So you know that. Two more, I'll let everybody else jump in. You've got a dog field in phase one, it's a really well used amenity, is that going to remain? Great. And lastly, you talk about employment at the top, what is employment? What does it look like?
A type of employment?
Yeah.
Variety really, but it's general employment. So it's workshops, it's sheds, it's unlikely for offices.
So it's going to be industrial units?
Yeah, yeah, closer to that age. Okay, something, given its proximity on the element, it's an actual home in that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've got David, Vic, Terry, and Terry.
Because you want to bring another phase forward, more houses going in. With so many more houses going in, the need for school might be there. So why not put the school in? How are you getting on with all the allotments that are on the drawing? When are they going in? Right, the green open spaces aren't green open, but now that's partly been covered. And when's the social housing going in? And the affordable housing seems to be right at the end of the project, rather than sort of being available now.
The but try and remember to do that soon.
Let's go to social housing.
Social housing, yes. What is a they're not at the end because the section 106 agreement that covers the scheme has a set mechanism or triggers for delivery on each subphase.
You can do that when you want to, you don't have to put it to the end. You can do it when you want to, can't you?
Well, there's two things that normally govern, actually sorry, there's three things that normally govern delivery. In no particular priority, there's the Housing Association, the registered provider, and their call for demand on properties. There is the phasing in terms of the delivery of the subphase. And then there is the planning permission, or in this instance, the section 106. And the section 106 does lay out the deliveries for the warehouse.
Doesn't, forgive me, I mean, I'm sure Terry knows a little bit, but that is the plan. If you wanted to bring that slightly forward, because there's a shortage of social housing, if you wanted to bring that forward, if you talked to Flagship or whoever that local housing provider is, you could bring that forward if you wanted to.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
So the hesitation comes back to the phasing point. Affordable housing generally.
And social housing, not the affordable, the social.
Sorry, language. Affordable housing is the overarching term that I would use, which covers social, shared ownership, intermediate, all those things. Generally speaking, it's the private element that delivers the infrastructure. So the roads, the drains, all those types of things.
Profit.
Yeah. Yeah, and basically delivering an affordable house is cost neutral, also it's profit neutral. So there's an element of phasing in, because you've got to put the roads in, you've got to do all those types of things before you get to your fourth. So that in terms of how a subphase would come forward, would have an effect in terms of delivery. In terms of parking that for a moment, doing them earlier in a phase, yeah, we can look at that.
Could, really seriously, could you look at?
Sure.
That would be nice.
Yeah, okay.
Lend allotments and open spaces.
The allotments carrying the scheme forward are going to be here. So what we've what we did from the original is that we had yeah, I'm just wanting to think if it's easier to go back again. So what we had previously is allotments sort of dotted.
There's a few of these.
There was, yeah.
Now. Was or is?
In terms of what we're looking at on this plan, it's a was. But the is is in regards to this plan. What I was trying to say was that we had pockets of allotment dotted around the scheme, which when this application went in in 2011, determined in 2015, may have been the thing to do. But now the general flavour is you look for basically more matched, you bring them together. Bring them together because it's more efficient in terms of security, in terms of, for instance, having a building to work with allotments.
Is it the same area?
It is, yeah. It's just there in one area and that's where we're planning to bring forward allotments.
Can I just make a really important point there though? Previously, there were allotments this Norwich Road.
Yep.
Previously, there are allotments to the left hand side, which is now within Fethford Parish. Everything to the right of Norwich Road, including where you're now putting in the allotments, is part of Kilberson and Breton Parish. So there are new, all of the allotments as part of King's Fleet will not come under Fethford Town Council's remit, they'll come under Kilberson and Breton Parish Council's remit, unless the boundary's moved again.
Thank you, Terry. Right, and the school. The school, right, because there's more housing coming in, you want to bring this phase further forward. It takes years to put a school up. If you started to plan it now for 25, 26, you know, if you try and bring another phase in, that's potentially a few hundred more houses with younger families and everything like that, is there not a need for school? Because the transport from there into the middle of town, where the primary school, where the schools are, we don't have the public transport to provide that. So a school on that site, which covers cloverfields and stuff, would be ideal position.
Another point to get now. Firstly, we would have loved the school to have been up and running by now. It creates a social fabric. It's a hand pocket in terms of assistance and so on. The other end of that particular spectrum, we absolutely ratify fact about it, is that if you've got a brand new school, then people want to come and move into the area because they want the benefit of a brand new school. It adds either to the value of ourselves or the rate of delivery of those houses. So we're all on the same page in that regard.
Right.
Having said that, the way it works is the county take the site off of us and they deliver the school. There's a, typically they allow a two year run in in terms of having the site through to opening. And of course, that two years always paid into a September, for obvious reasons. And from their perspective, they clearly need to fund the school. Because schemes pay for the school after it's delivered. So they want to narrow the point of delivery. So it's optimized because of the outlay to build a new school. We're not building, by bringing housing forward on the east of Nitro, we're not bringing forward more houses. We're bringing forward the same houses that we would have had, we're just bringing them forward in that area rather than over in in phase two. And that's again because of the critical mass on infrastructure. But of course, that also lends itself to deliver this school. Set to, sorry, just to clarify for my, set to the day is the county state. But that's actually irrespective of us bringing forward any further housing on the east of Norwich Road. They anticipate that that's when they will need to open a new school.
And going back to British Light, and then I've finished through it, thank you very much. Is there a possibility that that small allotment site, instead of being down over that side, it could go back top left hand to green space? Keep going, keep going, keep going, then sort of keep, keep going. Yep, and then go left where there's big green spaces.
Into there?
Further down.
Into there?
Yeah.
You could saw that as.
That's a community site, and that's open area, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a shared learning one.
Fair enough. Yeah, I'm aware of the place. Lovely. I'm finished. Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Got Matt, Vic, Terry.
Schools?
All right. Allowing you to come in, Terry.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick point on schools. I mean, we desperately need a school. The only access children have, the only foot access children have to the academy at the moment is along a muddy, nettle infested lane.
Jobblad Lane.
Jobblad Lane, yeah, not good enough. So, you know, schools please.
Again, we're on the same page. I mean, just, I mean, it is quite a while ago now, but the extension to the academy, so this area, and I'm going back a heck of a long, but that was delivered early than planned because the school was seeking academy status and it was felt to add. So that addition to the secondary provision, I'd say is there. This is the double walking area we've talked about. There's also a skate park in there for memory. Again, that, that. But the primary, we're on exactly the same page, we'd like that to be open smart. But it's a council later.
Yeah. Okay, would be nice if you could email and say to the council in general that you will look at housing, social housing, bringing it forward if you can. But obviously, we, you know, appreciate you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the councillor for King's Fleet area and I know Max is quite involved as well, which I greatly appreciate. I've had many walkarounds, gone in a few of the show homes as well. They're quite good. The environmental impact is quite good. There's hedgehog holes, which is always a bonus in my opinion. They're built to a good standard. I went into many that were in various stages of their development. Living rooms are a bit small, but they were quite good spec, so that was really good. And just a couple of things, a couple of my points have been stolen already. And I'll lightly drill on schools. We have an increasing vacancy rate throughout the schools in Fethford, of parents taking their children out of the schools because of the standard of education going on. There are now, I know the birth rates may be low, but there are a surplus of children needing education in Fethford. Coupling that with the increase in people moving to the area, I don't think 2026 is good enough in the, it's not you, but whoever that can be escalated to, don't think, I think far away. I think they're ready now. It's the first thing I hear when I speak to people and they say, when I walk around the estate and tweet to them is schooling. The other point I was going to make are street lighting. I understand this, it was a decision previous council. Outside of the main road, if there were no forms of lighting, it's already a built up area. It's pitch black. We're going to have to look at some sort of path lights or something somewhere because the area is, it's very, very dark if we were to move away from the main road. And the final point is, you said you're going to submitting a planning application to switch around. You've already submitted one before, haven't you?
So that was the application.
That's the one. I voted against it because I'll be blunt, I'll be very blunt, it was an appalling planning permission. Absolutely no information given to us as a council. I think that's probably the reason we actually voted against it. We had, there was no explanation why you wanted moving it at all. I'm pretty sure, I can't remember the exact reason we voted against it either, because we either voted against it or we didn't vote at all, one of the two. Because the quality that was submitted, no one told us why they wanted moving. It came across as money, it's cheaper to do that bit. So you'll swap around to get the easy bit done sooner rather than later. So if there are any planning that's going to be submitted in the future, then we feel free to spoon feed. I'm a new councillor as a major's gone. I've lived here 10 years, I don't know where this came from, but the application was shocking. I had absolutely no idea why you wanted to swap around.
Right, okay. I can pick up on that point then. So there is, there is an economies point. So earlier, we put a lot of infrastructure into one area. The infrastructure that's put in can cope with more from the housing and associated with the plan for phase one. So it seems only logical, I use the word sustainable, to capitalize on that infrastructure in terms of maximizing its use. We've talked about schools, the idea of putting a school here and then going and starting over here when we've not opened the school yet, seems a little irrational to us. So in terms of that, that focus, there's a logic. In terms of hubs, King's Fleet was designed with two hubs essentially. It's not rocket science, we have a railway. So we have one to the east of the railway and we have one over to the west. And those are meant to be the focal points. So I can I can happily make this point because I wasn't there day one. But that hub spans phases one and four. It spans phases one and two to one and four. So as it's currently planned, you've got a gap of several years in between one half of a hub and the other. Seems a bit logical to us. So in contrast, what we've done is we've put all of the hub in the area. Seems a bit logical to us. So in contrast, what we've done is we've put all of the hub in the area. And the one oh six will be adjusted to bring forward things like.
No, I said, I don't move on before I like, I answer you.
Okay, um, and then in terms of, uh, bringing public transport into the area. Um, the ideal situation is where you've got this loop, um, in terms of service provision. Um, so rather than, uh, one sided. A bus grid, uh, which is what we would have under the current phasing, uh, provision. By bringing that and, so to this side, and we've actually got two sided. So in terms of optimizing. Um, the, the commercial capabilities of a, of a bus service, that puts it in its best, uh, best position. Uh, and then as we touched on earlier, um, the idea of bringing jobs forward. Um, they were somewhat sort of delayed in terms of their appearance within the scheme. Um, again, I confess we have had strong interest in terms of, uh, delivering employment here. So, um, we'd like to drive the opportunity for that interest to be realised. But there are a number of. I would say very positive, but hopefully logical reasons why we're, I'm making this gesture. And I can only apologize if that wasn't made clear in terms of our original submission. What will happen is that we'll be amending, um, in line with. At this. So no doubt that will come before you again. Uh, and we'll make sure that the points we've made this evening will, will cover that in terms of our main decision.
I see that, appreciate what you said. Probably still not going to change my mind, probably would still vote because I don't understand why that, as you said, you went there for that bit. Why that wasn't the original plan to do it that way anyway. But also, I, I, I'm a bit hmm about the idea of. We're pushing schools back because there's, there's low birth rate, quasi lack of interest, but we're gonna change the zoning. Because you, it's illogical to have a school built so far away. So we are either concerned about schools or we're not.
But to, but to, we are.
In general, you, you want to change the zones because building the school up in that ten, you know, doesn't make sense for everyone, but then. But the schools also aren't that important.
Ooh, I definitely didn't say that. In fact, I'm pretty sure I said that we're on very much on the same page in terms of wanting.
In regards to changing the zones.
No, in terms of getting your school inside. So schools, schools, schools are great. I mean, I say they're social fabric. Uh, there are all the reasons that you have in that regard, which is positive community building. Um, but also a brand new school. Um, makes people want to move to the area and to be frank, they'll pay more money to buy a house in that area because they've got a brand new school. Um, personally, complete forward comment, I let the school off the backs a little bit first. To see what it's, uh, it's, um, achievements were like, but, but that's not how people generally see it. What, what I was saying about the, the area is the, under current phasing, after we've finished off phase one. It's a leap over to phase two. Um, and yet, um. We, we haven't even seen the county wanting to deliver the first primary school. Before we even get to building near what is potentially the second primary school site. But it just seems, I'd say it seems logical to, to focus on an area that A, you've put a load of infrastructure in. And, and B, in terms of facilities and provision, um, you're, you're looking to do it. It's in the match, natural fit.
I look forward to the application.
Um, a lot of answers already asked. Well, you touched on medical facility. Um, it was very quick. What is you, are you including? Is it just gonna be in one little corner down by the Tesco bit, or are we gonna have various? A couple of medical centres, or we're gonna have a, a big medical hub that we could use possibly as a. Big medical centre. I mean, it's, it, there's, there's got to be some. Substantial medical facility there because it's such a big development. And the medical facilities we've already got in Thetford are under so much pressure, they just are not going to, you can't get.
Well, um, the, the nuts and bolts of the planning mission for Kingsley. Is that we're to make a financial contribution for health provision. That's, that's, I'd say the, the baseline. Um, that contribution can be spent on site, so it can be sent within Kingsley. Or it can be spent in terms of health provision for the area. Um. It's not dissimilar to the school's point, and I'm certainly not trying to sort of step away from responsibility, but we, we don't. We don't determine health strategy. Um, that's what the NHS and the CCG do. Um, and what we're seeing, uh, currently is a, is a trend. The strategy as we understand it today is to create hubs for health and those, and that, that health. Is dealing with everything from dentists to doctors to, um. Taking the strain off of hospitals in terms of, um. Uh, local provision, um, small ops, things like that. But all of that is determined by, um, by, by the NHS. Um, we can, we can make provision on our side for a facility. But what we can't do is tell the NHS to deliver that facility.
Um, if I have anything to make it easier for them to do that.
Yeah, we, we, we can, we can make that available.
So, I mean, I, I'm a bit of a novice with this planning stuff. I've only been a councillor ten months. Uh, but I remember when it first went up, the post went in and said, we're gonna put Kingsley here. And we're gonna have stores, we're gonna have shops, we're gonna have medical centres, we're gonna have everything that you're gonna need. Right? And I'm not being horrible, but. Some very little of that so far. Couple of shops in one place. Until later on in the States, I've just heard you're gonna put some more shops in at the other end here, or the shops all going in the one place. You said, you, you said where the hub is, you've got, you've got the provision for three shops?
Yeah, you've got, well, you've got, um, a, a, an eight or eight, that's many years.
And then the reason for two others. And is there a gun on the other side or nothing on the other side?
Yeah, when, when we get to the, uh, western side of the railway, there'll, there'll be a, a similar type facility in this area.
Okay, that's fine. That's my criticism. It's gonna be supplied in my criticisms, I avoid. Um, uh, open spaces, play areas. What play areas you go, I mean, I, I, I'm. I mean, I've never walked around it. I've driven around it quite a couple of times. I've never had to go walk around it. What, what play areas have we got for, for these children?
Um, if we, if we look at equipped play areas. As you come in off of Nitro, uh, there's one in here. This is where the, uh, the Hopkins Crescent building is, it sits in front of that. Um, then what we'll see is Taylor Wooden Beat deliver a, a quick play area. And essentially what you've got then is, um, provision in close proximity. Those houses of equipped play. There, there is open space across the site. Um, and not, not particularly these. Um, but what we're seeing now is the use of sustainable urban drainage, so the basins that come as part of that. Of course, their design is shallow, they're not meant to go below. You often see those doubled up as, uh, as open space as well now. So when this basin goes in, um. That, that uses open space in terms of the way it's designed. Um, we're actually looking at putting a, um, an opening up and, and theatre in that. These ones, however, these are the old variety, are quite deep. Yes, so don't go and play in those ones.
The final, with, with the allotments up, so these are, these are already. I'm a little concerned that all the allotments are gonna go over in that one little corner in Kilwiston. And any allotment space which is also open space for, but older definition generally. Um, there's absolutely nothing in phase one and right way round that these. Really, couldn't we find somewhere for allotment space in this?
Uh, yeah, if you want us to look at that, of course. Um, i- if, but if Nitro is the, uh, is the boundary. Then we're probably better off looking over in this area.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, obviously, yeah. I mean, sorry, because I'm looking at the whole picture. I, I'm aware that the. Between the railway line and Nitro is where the major. First section is, there's nothing going on. And I would assume that one day when all that starts, which isn't gonna be in the too distant future, I wouldn't think. Um, that's when we sort of need to look at possibly putting a lot more space over there. And doubling up on everything we've got here because you can't go from, well, we are built now, to the other side of the estate. Where, where we're lying now. Realistically, how long would it take you to look at that and say, actually, we could find. Yeah, allotment space on that side where your red cursor is now, realistically.
I think in terms of bringing allotments forward with you as the town councillor earlier, happy to look at that. Um, in terms of getting over and building substantially. Um, I, I know you appreciate, I mean, we, we have consent dropped to five thousand houses and we've got. Seven hundred consented in detail. So we've got a little way to go.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of local speed delivery.
I'm sure some of my colleagues will love to have your phone number.
He's got Stuart, then Terry and Carla.
Um, yeah, um, I noticed on top, on the top on the west, the, the side of the eleven, got provisions for sports pitches. Going a bit further down. Now, one, when were they, when, when were the work start on them? And two, I know it's a bit cheeky, can we request that it's an all weather pitch for hockey? Rather than football.
Um.
And who would manage it?
Okay, um, cheeky, yeah. Um, and, and I think that, again, we're back to timing. We are somewhere away from, from looking at this.
Okay.
So, um, in terms of how could we bring them forward earlier? Um, we'd have to give that, we'd have to give that some thought because you, if they're gonna stay in these areas. Um, it's how do we get to them? This is the, this is the Coxon Road. Um. See, that area, um, is on, on the face of it, I haven't investigated it in detail, but on the face of it. That looks easier to agree to earlier. Um. The, yeah, so we could look at that.
And the next one is, um, I think Vic spoke about play parks. Um, last week at our amenities meeting, we signed, we agreed to sign up to everyone has the right to play. Uh, which is a campaign that, the play parks are for not just able bodied people. Um, is there provision for disabled people within these play parks?
Um, there, there is here. Um, I don't believe there is here.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I take the point, um. And, and that's something we, we do need to look closer at.
Because as a council now, we're taking a pledge to say that all the play parks under Thetford's. To ownership, that will have facilities for disabled people.
They're not in that one. Don't give me any more.
Yeah, the other thing, I saw, like, again with it, yes, we do need metal, more medical provision, but. I believe that the criteria is one doctor per five thousand residents, which isn't, is negative for us, which is scam. And the other one is. Yes, we do need a new school, but am I right in thinking that Norfolk would rather. Increase the size of their existing schools as opposed to building a new one?
Um. I, I, I helped to get, let me do the help first. I mean, now of course it's a, I mean, without sounding too flippant about it. Buildings can be built, provisions can be made, um, it's providing the people in those buildings to give us a service and I think. We're, we're all struggling, um, uh, county and regionally, uh, in that regard. In terms of the schools, yes, no doubt county will look at, um. Spending their money in the most efficient way possible. In some respects, you, you'd sort of want them to do that. Um, but.
Is it, sorry, it makes, it makes sense building a school there because on, on Cloverfield, I believe there was a provision for a school when that was originally built. But they never actually happened on that, that state either.
Cloverfield.
Yeah, the states were going down her way. When they first started building, there was a provision for a, a primary school in there.
Sure, okay, um, yeah. It, I mean, the, in terms of primary school, um, again, a couple of things, it's primary and preschool. So each of these has a, uh, the opportunity for a nursery facility. Um, in terms of when Kingsley was planned, there was a level of certainty, I should imagine given the scam. For primary schools one and two, um, would definitely happen. Three over here was left with a question mark. Um, don't worry off into the future, will we need it, won't we need it? So to be very, very open in that regard, um, this over in phase four, um. When we get there, we'll, we'll, we'll obviously all need to take a view. Um. The funding for building this school. Um, the mechanism is that the county pay for it and then Kingsley pays them back over time. Um. So it shouldn't, in some ways, it shouldn't be a financial issue. I suppose the other dynamic is the way that schools are occupied, or school sites are occupied now, in that. Um, county is obliged to go out to effectively to attend the process, um, and invite academies to be, to come on, um, onsite. Um, if that's the case, then again. You're most likely looking at an academy that's got a number of school sites, it's a business entity. So the finances probably should be there in terms of running the school. Um, on a very practical level, um, the likelihood is that the bill will be in phases. But you'll have the core provision for a two form entry, so that, that the hall will be for the overall school size, the kitchens and all those types of things. But possibly the, the school itself and so the classrooms will grow, they'll be modular. And that will, uh, be commensurate with the take up of pupils going to that.
And finally, it's a long way away, once that is fully completed, is that the only access onto the estate?
Where, where, sorry, where we.
Well, the, the current access is the only one, almost opposite Tesco.
Yeah.
But is there going to be another access or an exit on, from the estate? Because if you've got five thousand houses, you're gonna have a lot of traffic going along that state. Or one.
What you've got is, but that type of junction, um, that's in at the moment.
Yeah.
Will be replicated in that location.
Right, okay.
Um, and therefore you'll, you've got this, this loop. Um, coming east, um, most of east is carried through what we know as ten B and ten A.
I'm not worried about that side because it won't be us.
But just to complete, just to complete this, there's a, there's a link in the future on to Kilwiston Road, coming over to you. Um. We, we are looking at, um, a single version of what's here on to Goxton Road. Um, and that will serve either side. Um, and then there will be a provision for a bus bridge, uh, in this location. Um, when I say bus, it's bike and pedestrian.
Yeah.
Um, but it's not general view.
And the other slight concern is there's not gonna be a road or a pathway going on to the Emerald Estate. Because that'll be used as a wrap run and it'll be increasing the traffic on the estate on the other side of Jobless Lane.
Um, but there's, there's no provision at any point into existing. Um, housing from a big full point of view.
Okay.
We're encouraged, as you'd imagine, to do footpath and cycle and, um. And, and there's a number of those, uh, that permeate, uh.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carla.
Yep.
It's just my, sorry. Um, generalized comment, um, about street lighting. I'm a big advocate for street lighting. Um, not least as I think, uh, good lighting reduces crime, reduces. Other antisocial behaviours. It's also safer for women walking around. I'm not aware that Thetford Town Council owns any lighting in this town at all. Is that correct? Yeah. So it feels like we've been blackbailed by Norwich Council. If you want it, you pay for it yourself. And I think that's pretty reprehensible, frankly. Thank you.
Carla, Terry then, Mac.
Actually, some of my questions have been taken, which is great. I I I went right to the point that Terry made, with the lights again. And the point of the lights is that if you guys are going to make, if you guys are going to build schools there, which clearly we very much need so, what time does school usually finish? Three o'clock? If pick at the winter, that's already dark. They show them with all of mums and farms and, you know, people in wheelchairs and all sorts. They need to use the sub-logs, we'll be walking in the dark. So I can fumble my head, I'm struggling with grasping to the idea of why would an estate be built, a substation be put there? So we have the electrics for it, but not the supply of electricity to the to the residents in the street. So this to me is a bit baffling. And I'm still trying, I've been hearing all the explanations, still trying to really understand why, where did this all go wrong, basically? Because it seems like a pinball game. So county council doesn't want to put the lights in. Each, each tenant of town council, whoever had lights, we can't afford the lights. I mean, this is not something we're going, so there's no way we're going to be able to go to to do with this in the state, so that's how that's a hazard of that of that size and proportion. So is there any other avenue of any other organisation, whether it's the management, the builders, or the county council, that is going to be dealing with that aspect? Or is this just literally forgotten?
Fine, okay.
I mean, the whole thinking with three lights, footpath lighting, it's fluctuated over years, isn't it? But there's very much a focus now on dark skies. And the more lighting you have, the more impact you have on dark skies. So it's Victory Way has lighting, the main spine road, because of vehicle safety, it's a traffic road, principal cycle route. So that's got lighting. I think, as you say, elsewhere in Thetford, you don't go for lighting on all the side streets. Particularly footpath lighting because of the dark skies, because of the maintenance costs.
We have street light. This will be a downside.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I never even did mention what type of street lighting was. I'm not particular which type of street lighting is. It doesn't need to be a big, like the old style. Well, it needs to be some sort of illumination so people can safely walk around the street. Maybe a modern version of it, maybe it's a grounded, like, something better, power solar. I mean, we did, we did go environmental, we need to, we need to look at options. So I'm not fast about what type of lighting it is. What bothers me is that there's not, no light at all. So that's my, my point. So is is there anybody looking at it? Or you wish it's going to pause the whole question?
No, we can look at it.
Okay, I appreciate it. If you could feedback to us at which point the situation is, that'd be great. My other question is, we mentioned social housing. There's been a few alterations throughout, I mean, it's been a few years since the application, the whole project started, so there's been quite a few changes to it. What's the percentage of overall social housing or affordable housing? And we kind of branches out to a few different types of housing that is still allocated or projected for the whole site? And which part of that has already been built? Or occupied?
Okay. The overall percentage is ten percent, which is a review at the end of the track. So it would be five phases, but in four weeks. The the level of provision in terms of affordable housing, it might doubt it would be up in terms of particular, most of the affordable housing on this theme today. And that sits within this area.
And this Hopkins Homes, if I remember well, mentioned at the first phase, then most of the social housing should be already up and built.
No, no, each. Oh, sorry, in terms of.
Well, if you said Hopkins Home is the first phase of the building, in the first building.
Yeah.
And you said the majority of the social housing falls under Hopkins Homes, then most of them, the housing should be already there. Am I right?
The last bit, yes.
Okay, so which, I don't understand the whole point.
In terms of delivery, yes. So what what you've got is in each, each of the five phases are delivered in, are delivered in sub-phases. So we sell sub-phases to house builders. And house builders partner with housing associations for people, for housing owners. So on the screen, this area here, that's, that's Hopkins Homes sub-phase.
Right.
And they have consent in total terms for three hundred and forty-three new homes, of which ten percent will be, no, actually, that's not correct. Well, the first fifteen, sorry, the first five hundred on the scheme is fifteen percent and it's ten percent now.
So the first five hundred homes, fifteen percent is allocated to affordable? And then it's ten percent subsequently on the next phases for all the rest of the remaining estate?
Yeah. So Hopkins are around, around about fifty-one, fifty-two from memory. And a number of those have been delivered.
Do you know roughly how many have been delivered so far? Just for curiosity point? Because I know the lists are on the waiting list, they're massive. And we get that question quite often.
As you know, the difference between affordable housing and social housing is massive.
It 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 is. Social housing is the one that has the most demand because it's the one that people can't really get on the the housing ladder, even even shared ownership, there's a degree of, one percent that's buying the property. So I know that different, different systems, but let's go then. Social housing, do you have any idea of how much has been taken place already?
I have to give back. I I think it's somewhere in the regions of thirty, forty.
Thirty, forty currently.
But mindful that in actual builds, new homes, it's around about three hundred. Whilst there's consent for nearly seven hundred, there's only about three hundred that's been constructed.
Yes, yeah, I remember you mentioning there's a small portion that's been, that's actually physically on site. You mentioned, very briefly, before I pass on the word to others, the section one oh six, and yeah, I I remember that's where the funds from the management, the companies, the builders kind of reinvest that into the community facilities or things like that. Is that all allocated? Who's going to manage it? And and what's the point where the money goes? Is it to play parks or is it to any other communal facilities? Can you just clarify a little bit on that?
The section one oh six, in in its most basic form, is is I was making payments to either the district or the county council. Or or.
Sorry, the ones that don't put lights in the ground is the ones you're going to send the money to, right? This is something that I need to make sure that they understand well.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, I follow. The section one oh six money isn't paid for lights.
No, no, I understand, but it is for community facilities. I think before we have a playground, we need, we need lighting. Maybe I got my priorities wrong, but the way I see it, and having brought up kids in Thetford, yeah, no. Definitely first the lights, then the playgrounds. We don't all necessarily, by all means, it's just, it's just a bit of feedback, personal opinion, that you need to have the basics first before you expand on that and build the facilities. If the money goes to the district and county, what comes to the town council as the local area at all? If any, I'm just wondering.
In terms of direct financing?
Exactly.
I don't believe the one oh six has any provision to make contributions directly to the town council.
Okay, so we get none of the benefit to be able to produce things in the community? With the expectation that we take on lights and other responsibilities and highlights?
The financial contributions are for, for instance, if I use county as an example, there's a financial contribution for livelihood provision. So livelihood provision. So the council would take that financial contribution and they would put it to a free library provision with the town. That would be our understanding. And and there's a variety of matters in in the same. So it's not, it's not just have some money, planning can't do it that way, that would probably have to do with that one. It's it's money for
Specific.
Yeah, specific matters.
I get it. Thanks for clarifying that. Last point. Contribution to the health provision, which Vic quite rightly pointed so. Is 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 this in the provision of you provide the land alone or you provide the land and the building, put the building on site for the NHS to take over? Because that'd be brilliant. I mean, clearly they're struggling to to balance between having the location facility and then being able to provide those services from, I mean, like they mentioned, one doctor for five thousand, this was, had no favors when we were struggling here with appointments, but how far is your contribution to that health provision? How far does it go? The ground, is the building?
It 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 can be land if if the health service wants to build within Kingsley and and it's money. It's not.
It's both. It's the ground and funding for it.
If the health service wants to locate facility in Kingsley. We 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 don't govern strategy. So probably a slightly perverse example, but if if the health service decided that they're going to put all the health provision in actual trust, our contribution would go towards that 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 provision then actually.
So that's what I'm trying to understand. So all your funding, your resources for that would go with, would follow to whoever the NHS, whatever they send the services.
Where they want to send it.
That's what I'm trying to understand. Thank you.
Terry then, Mike.
And I'll try and keep it brief because I appreciate times getting on and we've gone over a lot of ground and I've got a couple of suggestions to make at the end. The first one, just to pick up on schools, because I'm in a slightly privileged position as a county councillor, because I've been in the room when we've been debating the school provision in Thetford. And I never do this, but I will defend Norfolk County Council here because it's a bit of a when an area, particularly an area of growth, needs a new school. And and trust me, they have looked into this thoroughly. They've, you know, looked at the statistics, they've looked at birth rates, they've looked at all sorts of other things. And their calculations have clearly demonstrated there is not a need for a new school yet. There will be in the years to come, but the worst possible thing we could have is either a new school opening and being empty or, you know, unsustainable, because at the end of the day, school funding is based on pupil numbers. Or, as I think one of you mentioned, that parents choosing to take their kids out of other Thetford schools and move into the nice shiny new one and undermining other Thetford schools. So it's really important they get this right and they don't open it too soon. It's also really important they don't open it too late and we run out of schools. So yes, it is about birth rates, but I will just throw in there, it's also about education standards in Thetford. It used to be that a minimum of five hundred children a day went outside of Thetford for their education because of a mixture of reasons, some of them because they want to go to the Catholic school in Berry, for example, or they go to Methworld. But an awful lot of that is by choice, because they choose to take their parents out. So it's not a question of money, in my opinion, it's more about demand. I was at the Great Effect for Partnership meeting recently and I made the point that Pidgin should be communicating more clearly with the community that the school is still coming. You know, it's one of the most tangible benefits from the urban extension. And we should be being really clear with the public that it is coming, it's just delayed, and this is the reason why. And Wilvan Tadson took it away as an action that they will look at the communications. You know, we are going to get a new school in Thetford, which I think is a good thing, but there's a good reason why it's not happening. So that's the first point. There's not, I understand you guys want it. So it's possible, which, you know, you understand.
Can I just, from my, from my, Terry? I I understand the point you'd be making. I I think it's great, you have to be following those discussions or part of those discussions. And I quite sympathise. Why should come in sympathising? You all don't know, but I do, because making your job more difficult. If you have to say to people, well, no, your kids can walk a mile or or link a bus, but I know they can't go to school. It's too far. And I I find that fairly amazing. The thing I think the point that's been missed, it seems to me, is that to some extent, it's a self-fulfilling publicity. We do it in a new school, because we haven't got a new school. So what will happen is that people who are the parents of family or to take the extreme example will say, I'm not going to come to to these new developments in Thetford because my child has another school to go to there. And and for their first school, it's really important that they be able to walk to it, as I didn't, my grandfather didn't, and my great-grandfather did. And I I think, I think in other words, what you're doing is you're saying, we don't want people, families with children of that age, because we're not providing the appropriate facilities for them. And if I can just go a stage further on that, and it applies to to schools and and the argument of not having street lamps is fucking amazing, but I understand the point about street lamps, but you know, we are living in the third decade, the twenty-first century, and you were telling me in effect, and it's not possible to design a shade of a light so that the light goes where it's wanted and doesn't go where it's not wanted. I find that really hard to believe, that we cannot actually provide lights that put the light where it's needed. But returning to schools, I I'm just absolutely amazed that we can say, two years, yeah, that'll be all right. In those two years, families will be saying, we don't want to come to to this new development, I think it's typically known as Kingsley, but that will faze, I know. Because there is no, there is no school for our our young children. And I I just think that's a missed opportunity. And furthermore, colleagues, this is what we did in Cloverfield. We provided a new estate, a growing estate still, with no facilities, whatever. Nothing. No schools, no shops, no clubs. Nothing. No social. And we're saying, oh, what a wonderful idea, let's do the same here. I think they're crazy. I I'm sitting here befuddled and beginning, what's I'm hearing? I think we are absolutely crazy to let this happen. If we can conceivably stop it, we ought to do so. We need an area which has got public facilities. And I thought street lamps were fairly basic. I thought schools were still quite useful ideas. Ran over, Mr Ken.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Terry. No, you're quite all right, quite all right. One of my actions was, if it is something the council is passionate about, here we are, to request the evidence. You know, we're making assumptions here that there's a demand. Let's get the evidence from Norfolk County Council. As a county councillor, I'm satisfied they've done their job properly and looked at the statistics. If it's something the town council feel actually they've got wrong, we should be asking. But we, we as a town council haven't asked either of our two county councillors to do anything about schools in Thetford, so you know, I'm quite happy to to have the debate. I'm glad Matt mentioned about ground disturbance, herthway and that sort of thing linked to the cabling. One of my bugbears, we're doing a lot of work as a town council to try and improve the town, address fly-tipping, litter, that sort of stuff. The area opposite the Tesco Junction, which comes under your land, is is awful. You know, it's privately owned as part of Pidgin and some of the roadside verges, completely full of rubbish. I don't know who does your sort of site maintenance, that sort of thing, but if we could maybe work together on that sort of thing, that would be every time I drive out of Tesco Junction, my blood boils because, you know, here we are on our side of the road, we can't cross the road and go into tiny private land.
But I think on that, the estate have been true in that corner the last week or so.
Okay, good, I have.
We'll be working around that.
Okay, good.
We'll, we'll check and we'll.
Yeah, it's partly because obviously where you chop all the hetero and stuff down, it exposes a lot of rubbish that was tucked underneath, so that's why it's looked a mess for a long while.
We'll take it back.
That'd be great. And similarly, I've had reports today from residents about the chaps that are doing the work down pre-nuns bridges for the cabling. Washing tools, washing water runoff into the river, which is obviously a big no-no from Environment Agency.
Yeah, definitely.
Probably got some sort of permit to to do the caving that close to the river, but there was a lot of water runoff into the river, which is not.
Yeah, there's a sort of older management plan. Part of the planning consent.
It might not be adhering to it though, based on what I've heard today. The, that's first of all. The, one of the main conversations we've had today is around what we call trigger points. And as part of section one oh six, as part of the planning application, there is a big long list about each time a hundred homes is occupied, Pidgin, whoever, have to pay over a load of money to X, Y and Z. That's in a very large document. And I wonder if we might want to receive that as a town council to go through, just so that we're aware of what those trigger points are. Because some of them, you know, two years ago, it was theoretical, but some of them are actually coming live now. So we, you know, particularly for new councillors, they might want to be aware of what trigger points are. I think certainly David and Carla make reference to sums of money and levels of affordable housing. And then similarly, I'm really pleased that the health provision aspect has progressed. And I know it's a point that Vic's been making about sort of minor injuries unit, that type of provision. Again, at the Great Effect for Partnership, we've had the CCG in three years ago, four years ago. Again, it was theoretical. And and we might be wanting to get them here or get them back to the Great Effect for Board. We have two town council reps on the board saying to the CCG, right, what is your latest thinking on demand in Thetford and being proactive as a town council and trying to influence some of that? And then last point is about street lights. Uh some of that. And then last point is about streetlights. Again, by virtue of being here since the dawn of time, um I remember the debate in this room, as you probably do, Stuart. Where we were asked as a town council, if you want streetlights on Kingsley, you you have to take them on as a town council. This town council voted no. It might be something the new town council wants to reconsider. Um but, you know, these chaps are right, that the Norfolk County Council policy is that for new developments, you don't have to put footway lighting in. And in places like Thetford, where we've got a new development, you're going to have a community that has. Uh facilities and infrastructure different to the rest of the town, and that's exactly what's happened. Um and I've had people from Kingsley contact me and say, when are they putting in the streetlights? Well, they're not coming at the moment and if something changes. So we might want to have um this point, so. Trigger points, CCG, streetlights and schools. I think actually there's some tangible things that could come out.
I think if Alan takes those down, we'll we'll try and revisit those. Some of those, I think there's an appendix with a section one of six, is I think we can get quite easily and just to inform people. Um streetlight, you're right, we did discuss it. It wasn't part of Thetford at the time.
Yeah.
Um and it's one of those things, well, how are we going to pay for it?
Yeah.
And that was what it boiled down to, I think, you know, the reality. Okay, um Mac. So okay, just the the district council have a section one of six, officer.
Yes.
Um I think it'd be the easiest point to call to um to take you on to that before.
Still Charlotte, Charlotte Brennan.
Rick. Um you can tell this is really useful for us because we're so out of date with the information we've got and the maps we've got. So hence all the questions, because that's a change. Can we get that presentation?
Yeah, sure.
Or at least that slide.
This 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 is going to be part of the amendment to the um the non material amendment application. That we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Um so that will come with that as an explanation, and that should be really short.
Well, obviously, we, you know, speak to the residents and they're answering our questions. We've got something to base it on. Not with that, it may be changed, get it?
Yeah.
Uh right, the next one is, uh social hub down in the right hand side here, you mentioned.
Yeah.
Sorry, uh primary centre.
Yep.
Lots of different teams, maybe residential. Is it going to be a community hub? Are you a multi-use area that the community can use for meetings, for uh kinds of activities? Because it's one thing.
Yeah.
That some of our estates lack, you know, somewhere where all the community can get together for whatever, what they want to do.
It'd be the intention. Um please. Thirty. Okay, there is, there is primary centre one O six, to bring forward plenty of facilities. Um. The only, the only caution in that side, um I guess not trying to create any uh any responsibility. Um it's it's sustaining, it's how they can sustain as a facility. So um a lot, a lot of village halls, those types of things these days are essentially run by volunteers. Um and in terms of what they offer by way of a set of facilities. Not saying Kingsley won't need it, but obviously the scale would 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 say it 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 would. But the the Balancing Act is just try and ensure that what happens is the new facility doesn't just pinch stuff from. Existing facilities, but somehow you make it complementary. Um so if I, a dark example, village hall down the road, as you know, the class, the old class picks itself up and comes to the new facility, this is moving something. So the the existence.
That's far enough away from everywhere, though, isn't it?
Well, well, possibly, but like I say, there's 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 just a bit of planning in that to make sure that. Um it's a it's a it's a little bit larger than, so.
No, good, as as long as it's thought through. Um the next one is railway running through the middle of the uh safety fence. Is there any provision for that? A safety fence to stop children going up onto the railway environment?
All correct.
It shouldn't be, yeah, that's the. 责任 responsibility, I think.
It's a network well thing, you know, that that's, that they take care of that. So there should be fencing.
Obviously, there's existing crossings, which are the things over being planes.
Uh in this point here.
And crossing.
Yeah, so that, when we say there's a crossing, there's an agricultural crossing, or foot houses there. Okay, you can get across, uh uh something might happen. So so that's getting closed. Um they will no longer be.
So as it stands at the moment, there's two strands of wire.
Is that what it's like? Okay.
We will do that with.
And and finally, um so when when this was all put together, right at the very beginning, we talked about how it's going to add to our town. It's going to be part of Thetford, it's going to look like Thetford. I'll be honest with you, it could be Thetford, Tring or Tobymory. It looks exactly the same as every other new estate you might find. One of the things that is really clear about Thetford is its its look of um flint, there's plenty of it on that area. Um, you know, chalk and walls, and there isn't any of that, not really. What I would make finally as well is our new entrance to the town, it's going to be an industrial site. Um and that isn't going to extend out, because that's right on the area level. So the first thing people are going to see of our town is that. The str- the uh the welcome to the town is down by Tesco's, the big sign. Is there a provision? In any way.
To do that further.
To to make to make the entrance to our town and to this new new developed. Field part of the town.
Uh. I- i- in short, um not not down to that level of moving aside, but that you're right, the new entrance. Um is going to be here.
Um yeah.
The the employment side, um. And I think your point. It's how how did we design that, to make sure we get the balance right, because on the one hand. Enjuries are.
Yeah. I completely get it. You saw you saw one of our planning considerations earlier. Some of our old uh old houses and and lights are pretty much flint clad. Um and then they were industrial use, so it's just a perhaps, maybe if you can.
I I get, no, I do get the point with it. Um yeah, I I. It it would be wrong of me to uh to suggest otherwise. Um but um doing it properly, as in that will fulfill what the league put in place. Surely appreciate is is really quite expensive. Um personally, the the alternative, and I'm not telling Hopkins, T L or T W what to do. In that regard, but the flip side is you get the flint blocks.
Flint panels.
Yeah, and. They've got, they, when whoever puts those in, they've got to do it really well for it to stand a chance of looking what. What it meant to try and look like. It's so often you see all of the the joints.
Yeah.
And you just know it's a set of blocks. And I'd rather, personally, I'd rather not look at that. Um because I think that's worse than um not having flint in the first place. But that's 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 just personal view. I I think by the the Hopkins Homes design, I mean, and again, this is a is a border point. Uh volume house builders tend to have um their their stars.
Yeah.
Um and that there is a, there is a distinction between Hopkins, T L and T W. What we're charged with doing is um trying to ensure that they align with one another without losing their own identities. But the border point you make is is quite understandable. Um. You can go and look at the Hopkins Homes that are in at his home site. You actually know that it's a Hopkins Homes because of the house type stuff. Um he's gone to Killston Park, next to Fodaville, he's gone to the Blue Cover. And that's a Hopkins Home Street, and you can see the uh the DNA between there and and on our side. Um. In terms of the reputation of Hopkins or the quality of of their homes, we actually thought that was a good first. Um deliver up for the city, to set a decent benchmark, because there are others out there that we thank. Are not as good. Um but the eye of the bespoke identity point, I just thought.
I think in the course of time, I I don't I don't want to know if it's a Hopkins Home, I want to know if it's a Thetford Home. And that's the quality, I want the individuality of of our town to be retained in somewhere. Take your point about doing it very badly, but that's fair comment. But we need to find a way of making it, what was your lovely comment about the comparison somewhere miles, hundreds of miles away? Okay, Tobymory, yeah. I don't want to look at Tobymory or Hopkins. I want to look at what the traditional understanding of Thetford is now. Just make the point incidentally that it's not just flint, it's concrete or chalk as well. And and they are both local materials and we should be seeing them some incorporated somehow. Um.
We we could, genuinely, we could spend hours on this one, and I don't need to be dismissive of that. But firstly, I think there's the other side of that point, and that is um and that is the innovation side. Um. The the quality in terms of build construction, um thermal insulation, all of those those properties. Are 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 high, building rates is good in that regard. But taking it into a different place in terms of innovation, um. That that wouldn't necessarily be Thetford, um but should we be embracing those types of house sites as well?
Well, the innovation I would like to see is encouraging people to walk, whereas in fact, a lot of what I'm hearing, I'll go back to three points about schools and and under. Well, stick stick on schools, but but we're not encouraging people to walk, it seems to me. We're having a school too far away. Uh we're having a possibility of unlit roads, so that people aren't going to want to walk along roads. I I think that would be an incentive to say, the modern thing is not to drive your car, it's to walk, or at least to cycle.
Yeah.
And we're not encouraging that as far as I can see. So I kind of the wrong innovation.
I know, I definitely take your point in that regard. I mean, we have, as of June of last year, we have um active travel in England. Um so we have a a government backed body that's there to influence design. So it focuses on pedestrians and cyclists. Um but I do take your point, but if you're going to have something like that, in terms of twenty four seven use, does that include walking? Um but but when when we look at designs now for for developments. Um our starting point should be walking and cycling, not managing the car. Um and we're encouraged to do that, and things like active travelling, they're there to, uh certainly on major schemes, try and ensure that we do that.
Carla.
Um, thanks. Um and in regards to the innovation of the homes. I think it's 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 there's a distinction between the efficiency of the home on the inside, the building, the quality and how modern it can be. Using technology to the advantage to give homes efficiency and the external side of the houses, which don't necessarily have anything to do per se. Because it is just the shell. The shell can look like, it can look like a townhouse, it can be a look like a modern house. And it can be made to fit within the the aesthetics of the remaining of the region. I think that's the point that he was making and. Quite, I mean, the appeal of Thetford is that it's flint and it's historical and that's what brings people and that's what. We is known for and that's that's, you know, within the whole of the town. Um it makes us unique and different from the rest. If you feature this, it's completely distinct looking houses on the side. If it's not going to feel part of fabric at the time, it's going to feel substantially different. I think that's the point you're trying to make. And one last point I was going to make is, I think it's a point we need to learn with past mistakes when it comes to planning and the overall. Uh design of our of this state. You mentioned there's very few exits, there's one pedestrianized one towards the end of the. Uh on the on the eastern side, I think western side, and and there's the main interest one, which will be the industrial area, you can say, where the employment is going to be. Sort of taking place. I'm concerned that he he didn't mention that it's not the most appealing thing in the world to have people coming through to a new town, right through the industrial estate and. And to me, it just didn't make much sense because every industrial estate there, whilst I'm full for jobs and I want to promote morning street locally. Which is one of my priorities. We do have a great roundabout within industrial estate already in town, which is kind of plenty of space to be developed. Where the those businesses and the noise that goes with it and the commotion and the trucks and everything that goes with it could be better placed rather than in a residential estate, which. To be honest, the term I'm going to use is going to be a dormitory, because we lack enough commercial or retail facilities to call it any, any. Anything else other than a residential dormitory where people come in the end of the day. I mean, most people like to go further afield to buy anything, whether it's groceries or anything else they may need on a daily basis. If we're going to learn with the other mistakes, with the previous mistakes in planning, is that if you look, for example, my ward. Where we have paint closed and we have the physical, that end of town, which is closed, there's really no exit. What happens is, over time, and once you have this state built up, over time, you're going to start seeing problems. Particularly for the dark spots, because there's not proper lighting, like antisocial behaviour, criminal issues and all sorts of issues. Where when you have an enclosure, it wards a a a merit that is closed with the lack of clarity. Or that is not open enough, it's it won't be safe enough. And that's, I think that's the point of concern that I'm trying to pass on to you guys, to people to thought. If the area is going to be closed without lighting, it's over time will get the relief, will be antisocial behaviour. And it's going to turn out to have same issues, which some of them we already have on the current estate, like I mentioned online, which is fine and close. Uh the Abbey State, which is another area, which is a lot of housing towards one of the answers, it's sort of it's got the woods around. But it is is it creates a lot of issues with antisocial behaviour and because a lot of the housing cramped in one place. Have a lot of houses from one place, but you don't have the avenues, even for the safety and the list secured properly. And things just kind of get, you know, strangled there with our exits. Um I think you'll find that five, ten years underline when this estate is building will start seeing some of those issues. Similar to the ones we have on this on this current estates as well. I just want to make you mindful about that. That's maybe some, give us some thought about the planning, especially on the entrance and exits of these estates per se.
Thank you then, David.
I know, I'm obviously, perfectly, you've got the industrial state up there. If I remember right at the outset of this, on my very first recollection, the industrial state was going to be on the other side. Sorry, let me, the industrial state was going to be on. Here, wasn't it?
You've got the tech, but the down where the Boudicyst is to the other side of Norfolk Road, that's where they, that's still earmarked for industrial use, but it's.
That was as part of this.
Well, it was there linked to it, but the.
All all this should have been, like, we're all new, the majority of us are new councillors. The only thing that's come out of this is any good is Terry is going to take up with Norfolk. What's happened to one O six money? All this stuff about the layout, the transport, the schools and stuff like that. Should have been talked about under the previous council and the one before that. We're going over ground that is not going to get us anywhere.
Okay, David, I I'm conscious of your point you're making, but I am conscious that. We have a lot of new councillors who have not been on the journey and need this background information to understand, to, you know, to engage with their. That everybody in Thetford, because it is a major part of Thetford. Um Terry and I have been around long enough to have been the journey with this, and a lot of these things have been discussed. Uh a lot of brick walls have been come across and, you know, the health provision. We've been told, yes, they've put make contribution, but it's going to be expanded in the Healthy Living Centre. You can't get the doctors anyway, so it'll just be there. Schools, they'll only build them when the 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 county council said there's a demand for it, yet we expand Drake in the in the wrong time. So that you don't have the demand, because so there's lots of things that have gone wrong and lots of things. You know, look at the space between Joe Blunt's and the bridge. You've now put a massive dividing line between those two estates with no connectivity between the two, and that's the largest section of the railway line there. There's loads of that green infrastructure. We were promised the earth on green infrastructure. You had one nice path going along the railway line out to Retum. Soon as they start building, they close it off both ends. So those were people wanting to access the cycle free routes. Yeah, up at the Redham thing, the gate, a new where your dog walking area, that's cut off. People used to walk along that track and use it to get out to Retum without having to go on the roads. So there's lots of problems that we've picked up and I'm a fraud. Sorry, Terry, I'm on the rant.
No, no, no. I like a good rant.
Allotments, you know, that deferred them, so it means we haven't got the ones to come through on this phase. Boudicyst, we've got that lucky thing there, it's put back, back, back. Let's get some interpretation up there, start marketing, tell them the story of Thetford. You know, I've raised this number and number of times. Um the the hockey club, you know, example, they put up the sports pictures right in the bike class there, who's going to manage them? We've got a shortage of managed regulation space in the town already. You know, we we only got the skate park because there's a lot of horse trading went on with Pigeon at the time to get it going, and we really appreciate. That that was able to put in place. But we're getting to a stage now where the hockey club needs to be dealt with uh as part of this. So I'm I'm going to call it a day there, but there are lots of points. So I'm going to call it a day there, but there are lots of points. And I know it's not your fault because you've got away with the planning Pigeon have in the past. When all this Sioux was done, we got it at the 11th hour because the stone curly popped up and suddenly it was all going to the north. And a lot of things that should have been dealt with seem to get brushed aside to deliver this. And I'm, like you, Carla, we've got a dormitory town being bolted on. We've got no facilities there. We only get community hall on Cloverfield at the behest of the Church of England. You are seeing a church in there, and that's unfortunate because that is well used as a community hub now. We've got nothing coming forward there because nobody's going to manage it. You've got lay parks that nobody's going to manage because we haven't got the money to do it. You know, there's a lot of things that Pigeon and the Sioux has all gone away with planning. We were promised the earth and we're getting delivered a bolt on community. So I'll call it a day. I do thank you gentlemen for coming along because it's been informative. And I know time's getting on, so I just want to draw a line on it. But it is, it's informative for my councillors. It's frustrating for me for being here, this part of 20 years, going through this process, knowing for well, we're not getting a better deal than we should have been. But thank you.
Matt.
Nice question of yourself and Alan. Can we revisit this in X amount of months to have a response from Pigeon? Can it be a separate item outside of planning?
Yeah, because of time.
Because we've just, we've got two big hot topics still to come. It's going to be a late one today. This is such a big thing. Can we have it as something in four, five months' time to get?
Yeah, hopefully the gentleman will come along and be back on a few matters there, but.
Managing your time for us, okay. Next door. We get answers.
We're not the easiest crowd, but we do appreciate the clarification. I think many of the problems is that we never really got all the information to start with. And the information we got, everything changed later on, and we seem to feel lost over time. So if you could, the guys come back and then let us know what's going on, that'd be brilliant.
If you're happy to have us back.
I'm sure.
It's not, nothing personal, we just want the systems left there.
At all, nothing personal.
No, no, no. It's a heck of a journey.
Yes.
It was ten odd years in the making before we got nearer consent, so.
Been here that long.
Well. There's a few decades to go.
Yeah.
Regular conversations with David.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Yeah, thank you. Right, we're back in the meeting. I'm asking councillors to move section 2X of standing orders to, as we have reached the two hour mark, so that we may continue. I'm happy for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we're on to Guildhall Two Towers update.
This has been one of the hardest things I've had to do since I came in at 12 o'clock. And this is what happened, to summarise it and how I've got to understand it, is that there was an assessment done in 2023. It looked like the tower would either fall through the ceiling or would be blown onto the market square. So we had an emergency made, emergency procedures. We put up the scaffolding. It's a words case scaffolding, it's exceptionally elaborate. And we've been. A contract that we've used had a lot more detailed tests. And what is very disappointing is that it's only up until sometime in January that they actually came back and said that the cock tower is actually not as bad as it looks. In other words, it's not going to fall off, it's not going to get blown away. It will at some stage need repairing. The small little cock tower on the sides, but that's army, or the top section of the building, is actually in a worse state than the one where all the scaffolding is. So that's got eight supports and only seven are in a good position.
So we've put the scaffolding in the wrong place?
No, the risk was on the cock tower. So what we've had to do is we've had to assess. It's going to cost us a lot of money. If we take it down and put it up, we're looking at 50, 60,000 pounds. We've now got quotes and it's taken us a huge amount of time and effort. We've got quotes to get the cock tower repaired. That figure is in the paperwork that we disputed, about 50,765. So to do those repairs, there's some added costs that we would incur on scaffolding. The pay is down six to eight weeks and then the whole scaffolding can come down and the building can be put back into its condition. So in the paper that disputed, we have some options. One is that we remove the scaffolding and we say there's no emergency. And we wait two or three years and every year we go and we do regular inspections. In two years' time or three years' time or four years' time, we might have to put the scaffolding up and we do all the work. The second thing is that we get the cock tower repaired. That we'll incur another 6,000 to 8,000 pounds of additional scaffolding costs. Or the third option is to remove the scaffolding and we immediately apply for grant funding, bearing in mind that with a fund, have we just taken down the scaffolding with the fund and said, well, why are you incurring another 40, 50,000 pounds by putting the scaffolding back up again? So those really are the options that we have. The assistance to make, or for this committee to consider, there's obviously other ones, is to decide whether or not to undertake the repairs for 50,000. If it's decided to do that, we suspend financial regulations. And if the decision is not to undertake the repair work, it's to remove the scaffolding after obtaining professional advice, that is to say, to do so. We still have to do that part of it. And that's a summary of what the paper is.
Okay, Matt and Terry.
Please, someone do correct me if I am wrong. But the scaffolding that is currently up isn't actually holding anything up, it's just access scaffolding.
No, it's to prevent, it was designed, excuse me. It was designed to prevent the cock tower actually falling through the ceiling. They actually thought that that was one of the reasons it collapsed, the roof wouldn't be strong enough. So what they've done is they've provided all the support internally to support that happening.
Okay. Terry, Vic, then David.
I think we're in danger of inhabiting the world of sunk cost fallacy or what my mother used to refer to as chucking good money after bad. I really do think we need to cut the losses. Have we any idea? I mean, my preference would be to seek grant funding, get the scaffolding down, seek grant funding and do it properly from the start. Do we have any idea how easy it would be to get that funding and how long it would take?
We haven't pursued that. We just, our big pressure.
I understand this is very, this is very much of today, isn't it? Yeah, I do get that. But that's my, that's my feeling on it.
Got Vic, David, then Stuart.
One of the first things I was told when we come on in, when this come up was, and I know that Amy isn't present now, but it was basically, oh, we get it up, let's see what needs to be done. We've got the funding. We'll have no problem getting the funding, bloody, bloody, blood. It seems that everything that we've been told up to now has been properly rubbish. And we're now going to the situation where we either have to find 70 grand, is it, to get this fixed? Or.
It's cost 70 grand so far, isn't it? Am I right?
Yeah, when, when, look, another 50 or.
Yes.
That we haven't got anyway, as far as I'm aware, or do we have that available?
Have.
It's rubbish, really. What we've gone through in the last 10 months on that is complete and utter. It's incomparable, I would put it down as, to be honest, because we were basically told, oh, it's just a matter of put it up, we'll get a grant, and none of that. Where's all this work that was done before? Where's that now? It seems to have just disappeared into the abyss. 70,000 pound of this.
Vic, you asked the question, is the money there? Alan says it was, but David, Stuart, then Terry.
No, I'm fully agree with that, absolutely. Thank you.
I'm just looking at the 70,000 pound that it's cost just to have scaffolding outside the Guildhall. So am I right in thinking that the company that done the original assessment have said it's going to fall down? And the company that has just done another inspection has said it was exaggerated? Am I right in thinking that somewhere, someone along the line is trying to hoodwink the town council into getting to spend an awful lot of money on something that doesn't actually need doing yet? You know, probably will need doing eventually, but I'm thinking is that 70,000 pound and a further 50,000 to have it done, 120,000 pounds, and is it likely to fall down anyway?
If I can comment, I mean, what we were told when we had the feedback on January was that if you, they did a drone inspection, first they threw a drone up just to assess it. And then said, look, it looks very seriously, so they put up the scaffolding. They then said, okay, this is very, very serious, so they had to reinforce it, put all the internals. What happened in January is when they actually had access to it, they were able to start probing it and actually getting into the timber struts. And they were saying, what's happened over the years is that, I think about 20 years ago, 25 years ago, they had a paint job, for example, but didn't use proper paint. So all that paint, all that's done is it's just bubbled, it's allowed a little bit water behind the paint. So when you look at it visually, it looks as if the whole thing has collapsed. What they found is that it's actually, it's not as bad as it had, it looked like through all the visual inspections that they did. When they had a chance to do the testing, they've had a chance to go into the roof and actually make sure that the beams are strong enough. Because the beams on the Guildhall apparently are, you know, they should be able to hold up anything. There's no risk of the cock tower falling through it. But it's taken that amount of time to actually get those answers and for someone to ask the question. And I know the people at councillor's sitting finance person, I will know that they hate it when I say this. We should have got a project manager right up front to actually advise us. We've been trying to do these things. We, at the moment, regardless of what the councils think, we are going out to get professional project managers to help us on all these big projects. We've got to fire risk assessments. We cannot do that internally. We're fooling ourselves if we can do that. We can't, if the council decide to get this repaired, we, Nick and I don't have the skills to be able to do this. We've got to get professionals and to project manager and to look after the council's interest. And that to me is the biggest mistake that we made. We tried to do these things, there was no internal responsibility. I mean, I only got involved, you know, in November when I got called at one of the, rightly so, you know, at one of the committee meetings. As I started to try and stand and meet with people myself to see what's actually going on. So it has been a very unprofessionally run process up to a point in time. I think letting a drone inspect a building is probably the biggest mistake. How can a drone inspect a building when it's like sitting on there?
Terry first.
Fully got a problem. Given the cost to put it up, 45 grand, and then the ongoing cost, which was quite significant. Hindsight's a wonderful thing, but the council should have absolutely been ready to have all of the professional services at its disposal once. So that we could come to a conclusion. The money wasted in my book is not the money put in the scaffolding up, it's the money wasted between when it went up and now, because we should have been within, you know, a week of it going up, been informed what the situation is so that we could make a decision. That said, I think the grant funding argument is a bit of a fantasy because if we're going to spend 45 grand, 50 grand to put it up, the odds are you'll then have to do the work yourself because you'd never be in a position to wait for grant funding. Because we're looking at a cost roughly equivalent to the cost of scaffolding to fix the issue. A fund is not going to then give you the money. And I do think there should be some sort of review of how decisions of this nature are made. We're talking about significant sums of public money. And I think, you know, it's only right that we look at our internal systems and processes that led to this. I'm quite keen to do that. That said, of every single thing this council owns, if you look at all the buildings we own, this is the Guildhall. I don't think the council would be forgiven by the public if we didn't maintain it properly. It's one of the most significant buildings in Thetford. We've got to look after it. We have reserves for a reason. You know, we have a responsibility frankly to maintain it. So as much as the sums are quite significant, and I can think of lots of things I'd like to spend them on, we have to maintain the Guildhall. There's no ifs and buts about it. I'm quite happy to propose that we go with option two, which is repair now. Suspend financial regs and we fund it from the Properties Repair Fund. That's what the fund is there to property repairs reserve. That's what the reserve is there for. We've wasted enough time, let's get on with it.
Okay, so we've got a proposal. David, can you run it?
Exactly what Alan said. The management of it was amateurish and it was let go. And I was one of the people, I'm sorry that I pushed and pushed and pushed and went along to the inspections and everything like that. We got it wrong, or the previous council got it wrong. We've learnt from it. We've learnt from it, sorry.
It was us.
It wasn't.
It was.
We didn't put that scaffolding up.
No, we voted for it.
We should have had financial management in it and every other project we do now must have that financial management. If you put the bill up, fine, because let's get it done properly.
So Terry's tabled proposal, can I have a second to that proposal? So move to a vote then, all those in favour of the proposal. Thank you, Alan, thank you.
Awesome. Does it go to the full council for ratification?
This is equivalent to full council, pending.
And no question. Alan, I wasn't able to pop you by.
No, 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 no. I put a management, we have to take, you know. Better.
The 75123, community engagement, something we wish to put out there. 75223, the officers' update, Alan?
Nothing. It's the 753 exclusion of present public, considered resolved pursuant to public body exhibition through the exact 1960. Present public excludes any remaining United Business Grounds. The ultimate nature of the business to discuss. Yes, thank you.